Good evening. We're going to call the LaPorte County Council Special Meeting for July 13, 2020, to order at this time. We're going to stand for the pledge. Mr. Yagowski?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you haven't muted your phones, please do so now. Roll call, Madam Auditor.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Unmute her.
You got to unmute Joey.
And I also have two losses right here.
You know, it's going to be sad when we go back to the regular way and you're sitting in the room and we can't hit a button like that.
I still won't hear you.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Garner? Mr. Molenauer?
Present.
Mr. Novak?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Present.
Mr. Santana?
Present.
And Mr. Yagowski?
Present.
You have a call.
Thank you. At this time, public comments. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? Anybody from the public would like to speak? Hearing none, public comment is closed. Special meeting business. Consider adoption of ordinance 2020-7 for the Michigan City Courthouse renovation project first reading. Madam Auditor, you want to read it by?
Mr. President?
Mr. Yagowski?
I'd make a motion to approve by, to read by title only.
Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, to read by title only. Is there any objection? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank, thank you. By title only, Madam Auditor.
Here we go. Mr. President. I'll get it.
Mr. Yagowski's got it. Don't worry.
Ordinance number 2020-7, an ordinance of LaPorte County appropriating the proceeds of its local income tax revenue bonds.
Has everybody had a chance to review this?
Yes.
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 Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say one thing. Tonight, this is just for clarification. Tonight's meeting is the first reading of this ordinance for the financing of the Michigan City Courthouse project. The public hearing and the second reading will begin July 27. When we published this in the paper, it said tonight was a year, the public hearing. It is not. It's on July 27. So I wanted to make that clear to everyone.
Thank you.
Now, I'll turn it over to Pat Selmer and Jason Semler for any questions.
Madam Auditor, I don't believe Ms. Selmer is.
She's on.
Is she?
She wound up zooming in at the last minute.
Okay, great. Thank you.
She is.
I said the same thing you did.
So if you have any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagowski?
Hello, everybody. I have a few questions. The complications of this not being bid out the first time really complicated this to allow us to find out what the savings was by doing it during the time of this pandemic, being that people were out of work, so on and so forth. I still would like to know, and I have not got answers to. I've called Mrs. Wensky. She's tried to find it for me, but people that we paid for doing this project had not been able to give me project pricing or anything. The amount of money that they came up with, $300,000, ridiculous. I know, you know, it's going to cost more than that to tarp and move things around than it is going to cost to be savings of $300,000. That's ridiculous. So that's one of the questions I need to ask and need to find out because I have not up to this point been able to get this as I've asked these questions.
I might be able to help with that. Am I, am I unmuted? We are still working on that number. We had a meeting as late as Friday to discuss that, and I hope to have a better answer for you on July 27.
So, Mr. President, I'm willing to move for progress, move this along for first reading, but this is pretty ridiculous at this point that we, all of a sudden now we're rushing this project when the council asked for this to go through and they were turned down by the commissioners, and now it's priority, and now we're going to push this this quickly when I don't get to see the numbers, which I've asked and requested for. It's not the way we should start projects, not the way we should have started this project out. We've been too many years, too much time to go along with something like this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
That's my motion, yes.
All right. So your motion is to move it forward.
Move it forward.
We have a motion. Is there a second? And we'll still have questions, so.
I'll try again because neither people at home. Considered motion to move for first reading, 2020-7.
Second.
Second by Mr. Quinn. So it was a motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Quinn. Is there anybody else that would like to discuss first ordinance 2020-7 on first reading? Do we just carry this over or we actually take a vote?
Just.
So we just?
Carry it over.
Carry it over. Correct. So no other comments? So this will be held over for second reading at our July 27 meeting? Thank you. Next, consider adoption of ordinance 2020-7A for the Michigan City Courthouse renovation project first reading.
Were you voting on the first vote?
No, we didn't vote.
No, we didn't get a vote yet. That's right.
Yes, you do need a vote.
Correct. All right, let's back up.
So, did you do 2020, did you, did you 2027-A first?
No, I did. 2027.
The only one that's here is 2027-B.
2020-7.
Yep, correct.
So.
So we have a motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Quinn. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Who was the nay?
Mike Rosenbaum.
Okay.
All right. So now we're going to move on to 2020-7A, which is consider adoption of resolution 2020-7A for the Michigan City Courthouse renovation project first reading. What's your preference?
Request to be read on first reading on top, by title only, please.
Motion by title only. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Molenauer. Motion was by Mr. Santana, correct?
Yes.
Yes. All right. By title only? You want to do this one too?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2020-7A, an ordinance of LaPorte County, Indiana, authorized the insurance of the sale of bonds for the county of the purpose of providing funds to be applied on the cost of the renovation and expansion of the county courthouse in Michigan City, Indiana, together with all necessary apprentices, related improvements and equipment, and incidental expenses in connection there with and an account of an insurance of bonds thereafter.
Therefore. What's your pleasure? Is there a motion to move it forward?
Motion to move it forward.
We have a motion by Mr. Molenauer. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Second by Mr. Quinn. On the question, is there any questions?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Yagowski?
Can we please come up with, I know it's this ordinance form, it's written over all the pages. Can we have a rundown of, I did not receive the rundown of numbers, the current ones.
Madam Auditor?
I wasn't, I, we didn't get, the commissioner's motion did not get sent to us. I did not see what, any of the bids or anything, so I don't know what's going on as far as numbers are concerned.
Nobody, nobody has seen the bids yet.
So how are we supposed to bid on this? How are we supposed to vote on this? We don't see it. Why are we voting on it tonight if we haven't, if we haven't seen the bids yet? How come?
Doug, do you want to take that one? On mute.
Mute.
All right.
Okay.
You know?
Yes.
Okay, so the bids have been open in a public meeting in front of the commissioners. We had a few categories we had to rebid because there were not bids or there were some, a couple errors, although they were not significant. I think we gave numbers to, our budget numbers to both council and commissioners, and the bids came in on budget. Does that answer your question, Mr. Yagowski?
No. So again, I'm a county council, and why can I not see the bids? If I have to go public, I can sign a piece of paper. I can do what I've done in the past. I've been involved in these things before. Let me see what I've got, what I'm going to vote for. I don't, I don't, I don't, I know it's a purpose of what you're trying to do it for, but it's not what I'm happy with. Again, this is the second time of these two things. I'm playing the first time of how we, how it was handled. The second one here is, there's no reason why the county council cannot be trusted to see these bids.
So we'll have those by the 27th for full review and everything?
Well, all, all the bids are in my office if you want to see them.
Mrs. Wensky, I've asked for these bids for three weeks. So we'll have those before the 27th?
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking for an affirmative. Is this unacceptable?
Yes.
Yeah?
Doug?
He says yes.
We're still, we will still have a couple outstanding categories, but they, there's not enough money to make much of a difference because we, we had to rebid a couple categories. I don't think the due date will be before the 27th, but substantially all the bids are in.
But you can mark that or note that on there when we, when you give that out, that those categories are still, you know, pending or whatever, so.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, if I can to, just to say, yeah, just to, you know, mark it so that we can see where there would be an adjustment possible or whatever, and maybe what that adjustment would be, I think would be, you know, suitable.
I don't, I don't think you can do adjustments at this point. The bids are what they are.
That's not acceptable.
I don't, I don't need to, okay, I, I think I worded that wrong.
Okay.
But again, just knowing as much as we know to, to give us that and then to show us what we aren't going to receive until after the 27th, then, then we've got an idea. And like he said, we'd like to know some sort of figure, roundabout estimate is, is what we're saying, I think.
Mr. Beege?
And, and I'll have, we have a summary showing where we're at on budget and that we're, we are on budget, okay? Now, keep in mind too, we're not yet going to accept the bids until we get them all in, but we can show you what we, what we've received thus far.
Mr. Beege, when you were at the commission meeting regarding the bids, weren't these numbers capped per category?
What, what do you mean capped?
I mean, the top number is the top number, the $19.5 million that we're looking at the bond, right? Plus the, I mean, the number, the numbers cannot exceed that.
Correct.
That's correct. That's correct. It, it, when I have, when I say we have a few bids out is because we didn't have a couple bidders, but it's for like doors and some pretty minor items.
Hardware.
Yeah. But as far as the numbers, the gross numbers are concerned, we're on budget.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
When we get this list, are we going to get a summary of just one number? Are we going to get a listing of how all the bids add up to 19.5?
We keep, well, John and Blank's already prepared a summary per category, so we should be able to provide this council with that on the 27th, unless the bids that are outstanding.
I would, I would, I would request that we get that prior to that, that they can be emailed out to everybody so they got a time to review them. If there's any questions, we can ask those ahead of time.
No problem.
Thank you.
Mr. President, just as a statement, I, this, we better, I better, I'm glad that we're budget. We better be below budget because again, we realize what we did here when we took this vote, what was going to go when, when the fair market value of employment, labor, and everything else materials are lower now than they were four months ago. So I hope to tell you that better be below, are, below our number.
Mr. President, Councilman Santana here. Might I suggest then, with, until we receive what Councilman Yagowski is asking for, that, and tell me if, what you all think about, to table this one, the 2020-7A, until we receive what, what has been asked for?
Both of them next.
And then we, we address it then, which it probably seems, you know, everybody, but in order to do things in the proper fashion, I see what Mark is saying, we should probably wait to get those, those numbers. I, it's up for suggestion.
Ms. Ms. Selmer, is she still on? Can you ask her to?
Daddy, can you answer that?
Can you hear me? Can you all hear me?
Yes.
She's on her phone.
All right. I wanted to address that question for you if I could.
Yes.
Over the weekend, I received an email from Shaw, and it was from Ton and Blank, and based upon the way the specifications were written by Ton and Blank, the bids will expire on August 29. That means the hold period that they put in place was a set number of days, and I think that calculates to 90 days from June 1. And what that means is that the bids that have been received to date, and from what I've been told, those bids are acceptable, they're within budget, they're the bulk of the project. There's a few categories that are tiny little items that aren't going to affect the overall project that need to be rebid, but it does not, I guess what, what I'm saying is there's no need to abandon these bids that we've got, that we like. We like these bids. We would like to use these bids, and in order to do that, we have to sort of keep moving ahead. And because the categories that are left unbid are small and can be managed and won't impact things in a significant way, we were told to move ahead and say, okay, we've got a maximum bond issue of $19,500,000, and we're very comfortable that these little bids that are still going to come in will not impact that.
Mr. President, I'd have to say this, that, I, I, again, I don't think this is any fault of yours, and you've got your, you know, your i's dotted and t's crossed. I think again, it was lack of communication, maybe between our entity and the other one, where we're going to get these numbers, as Mr. Yagowski has reiterated a number of times. Not your fault, ma'am. So where do we go from here is the question. You raised, you raised some good issues, Mark, and again, I'm open for suggestions, you guys.
Well, I, let me remind everyone, these numbers have been presented to the commissioners and the public. They are of public record. Now, we certainly can get individual copies to the council members, but these, these numbers have all been distributed and disclosed. I don't know why the council didn't get it, but.
That's a good question.
We really want to stay on our timeline here.
Well, keep in, keep in mind, Mr. Beege, that all sounds good, but that's our job with those numbers, not anybody else's. It's funny the commissioners restrict those numbers from us, and the, and the falsity of saying that we can't be trusted with those numbers even insults me worse than that.
I understand that. The numbers are assembled, and we can get them to you right away. But if you do a first reading tonight, you still, you'll have the numbers of plenty of time for the second and third readings.
So how would you like to proceed? So, Ms. Selmer?
Yes.
You understand? So can we do first and second reading on the 27th if we were to hold off on this one?
You need to do at least first reading tonight, and that's it. And you can, you know, that's all we're asking for is first reading on both ordinances.
We need to do something.
Nothing more than first reading.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have a, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions on this resolution 2020-7A?
Yeah, just one more, and I guess this is for our attorney. Again, understanding the, the structure of this, this is only first reading, and as Mr. Beege, you know, said too, that can, that can be changed, or, you know, so I guess since we have that out, in the event that something comes in goofy, which we're being told that's not going to happen, then we still have an out. So I'd just like to bring that point, and I guess, Mr. Martini, is that, is that the truth, and, and we could assume that?
Yes, the council at second reading could not pass, pass it. You have the authority to do that. That's why there's two readings.
Got you. Okay.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Do we have a motion to move forward? I didn't hear.
Yes, we have a motion by, by Mr. Molenauer and seconded by Mr. Quinn.
Thank you. I thought that was to read by title only. I was confused.
I'm correct, aren't I? Because I think, yeah, because Mark was going to second it, and I think Mr. Quinn did it.
I'm fine. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other questions or comments on this 2020-7A? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
What's the second?
Mark and Mike.
Mark and Mike.
Rosenbaum.
Four, two.
Okay.
So four to two. All right. So that'll be held over to our next meeting on July 27.
Correct.
Next item is discussion of other matters relating to the Michigan City Courthouse project. Auditor Joey Wensky.
You know what? You can remove that because there's really nothing to, to talk about tonight. We put that on there just so that in case there was something to talk about, we had it on there, but I have nothing to say, so.
All right.
July 27th, so.
So we're going to, we're going to remove item number three.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The only thing that was on that question, and just, just for my question, we had talked about maybe using, doing the whole courthouse renovation at one time. Have we gotten anywhere with any of the entities of, sorry, finding a place, an alternate place for the courts?
They have been, they have been meeting with, I don't know if you want to say the place or not.
You have to say it. Are we, are we moving forward with that? That's all I'm asking.
They're working on it, yes.
We're still working on it.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Item number four on the agenda is consider replacement of three sheriff's vehicles from CCD Fund 1138 in the account, in the amount not to exceed $140,000. Sheriff Boyd?
Good evening. I sent an email to you Thursday or Friday of last week, just as to refresh your recollection. We have had three police cars that have been totaled, one in May and two in June. In all three of those, we, I'm now pleased to say that we have word from insurance. We've either gotten a settlement for one, or two others have agreed to settlements in which, the first one, we received a check in the amount of $19,312.86. The second one will be receiving $18,850, and the third one will be receiving a check from the insurance, the amount of $19,800, as well as a check for $3,831.79 for equipment that was damaged as a result of the crash. So we will be receiving $61,794.65 when it's all said and done. We will need to be replacing those vehicles. In case I didn't mention it here, I know I did in the email, they were all 2017 models, and none of the accidents were deputies' fault, two of which were failure to yield, and the third one was a result of a deer collision in which a deputy was running red lights and siren to assist somebody who was attempting suicide. With that being said, we do need to replace those vehicles, and we need to move forward. At this point, we would like to place an order, so I'd like your blessing to allow us to move forward. If you do the quick math, you'll realize that although the $61,000 will be deposited into the general fund, we'll need to make up the amount of $51,000. So we're going to be asking for an amount not to exceed roughly $113,000. That will include the cost of the cars, plus some equipment as well. As I mentioned in the, in the email, there's some body changes, so we have to replace some of the equipment that we can't take from one vehicle and do the other.
Correct. Questions?
Are we, are you planning to purchase, you, you mentioned two options, to find something that's around now, which is very high price, or to wait and get the brand new vehicle?
Right. Our option is the second, as you pointed out. We would be getting 2021s through the state bid. The, the nice thing about that is we'll be getting $7,500 per vehicle and bid assistance. So we will be saving money over the vehicles that would be available now. We've done a nationwide search, and they just don't fit what we need, besides the fact they're not our colors. We'd have to go and get them, and they're a little pricey. And, and we've talked with our chief mechanic and our major, and we think that we can hold off until we would be receiving these the end of November, first of December. Would like to order them now because Ford is going to be starting up their production, and we'd like them to be among the first that are produced so we can get them fairly, fairly quickly.
Right. Mr. Yagowski?
Sheriff, by the way, happy birthday to.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are any of these three vehicles, the vehicles that we would have been trading in for the, for this current year that we were purchasing?
No. They, they all had about 70,000 miles on them.
That's fine.
They would have lasted about one more year.
That's fine. So with that, we normally have, what, 11 cars usually come in? Well, we see a reduction next year than in cars that you're going to be asking for since we're reducing the number by three new cars anyway.
Yeah, potentially. Yeah, that, that would be our hope.
Okay.
Yep, and the nice thing about this is we're getting more as a result of the insurance companies than we would on trade.
Sure. Thank you, sir.
Could you give me that figure again? 61.7?
Yeah, $61,794.65.
And there are, all three are going to be the Arizona base, I think is what it said.
Yes.
And I read the email, and on the bid assistance, I don't think it's a no-brainer. I think you've got to really go that way.
Exactly. Yep.
All right.
President, I'd like to make a motion, this is Santana.
Yes.
To, to approve this out of the CCD Fund, number 1138, please.
We have a motion by Mr. Santana.
Second.
And not to exceed how much? Because there's two numbers. There's 140 on the paper, and then 113 mentioned by, by the sheriff. This is Santana. I'm just asking for a clarification.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I just had to do the unmute. If, if, well, the lower number, if 113 is going to make it happen, Sheriff.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion by Mr. Santana, seconded by Mr. Molenauer. Not, is it 113 and some change, or is it 1?
113.
113 even?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Not to exceed $113,000 to replace three sheriff's vehicles. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Next item on the agenda is consider replacement of an ambulance from CCD Fund 1138 in the amount not to exceed $130,000. Director Andrew McGuire.
Good evening. On 6/19, we had an ambulance involved in a very serious accident in Michigan City. Unfortunately, the ambulance was totaled per the insurance adjuster. We recently received a dollar amount of $91,246.87 in damages. of $91,246.87 in damages. So, this includes the vehicle and some equipment that was damaged. We had quite a bit of equipment that was damaged inside the vehicle, including the cot, the cot mount, the monitor mount, and a computer and computer mount, and a microphone for the two-way radio. That was all included in that $91,000. We went to our most recent ambulance vendor, which is Osage out of Missouri. We've used them the last couple times for ambulances. We went to them, had them do a quick, estimate a quick bid for us, if you, if you say. And they came back at a replacement cost of $216,542.2. Now, they were questioning our performance bond, whether that would be needed or not. So, if you do the quick math, if we do not require a performance bond to make up the difference, we would need $125,293.55. If we do need the performance bond, I was talking to Joey about what the State Board of Accounts recommends or suggests. If we do need it, it'd be $128,355. And I believe I sent an email to the majority of you pertaining to this information. So, also, I did want to mention that our vendor at Osage not only quickly threw together this price for us, working with us pretty quickly, going through all the new modifications, new pricing increases, so on and so forth. Ford had a, a new chassis, 2021 chassis, which had price increases on it. They had to figure out what all that was. But he was also willing to give up a, a spot in his production line. So, he had a demo or two that he was going to run down the line. He already had on, you know, scheduled to go in. He said he'd give up that spot to us so we can get this ambulance built in five months versus eight months like it normally takes. So, he would just ask to know as soon as possible if we want that spot in, in that line. So, I thought it was very nice. I've never heard of a company doing that more, so it was very nice of them.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion on this one too, please. And that is to replace or, to, for the amount not to exceed $130,000 from the CCD Fund 1138 for the replacement of the ambulance.
A motion by Mr. Santana, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Quinn on the question. Mr. Yagowski?
Is this the one that was rear-ended by the hospital?